You know better.
Good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M. And this Spring Lake Board of Commissioners regular meeting is now in session. I do ask that you please turn off all cell phones and keep all sidebar conversations to the bare minimums of respect for the business of the town. And I will begin with calling Evangelist Sandra to the podium to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please say the name if you choose to.
We're glad to be here. It's good to be here. A Father in Heaven. Lord, we come to you this evening. Thanking you for another day of blessing us to be able to assemble here this evening. And Lord, I ask that you be in the midst of the meeting in the name of Jesus. Bless each one of this on the board in the name of Jesus. Bless our policemen and our firefighters in the name of Jesus. And Lord, help us to have a good community. Help us to work together. Help us to work in unity in the name of Jesus. Direct us, Lord, in what you want us to do in this community. Let it not be about self, but about everyone. In Jesus' name, I pray and thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sandra. I'll now call for any additions or deletions to the agenda. Commissioner Placios?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I add yard of the month recognition?
Absolutely. We'll add that to Agenda Item seven E. Matter of fact, let's not put that at E. Let's put that at D and move D to E. Are there any other additions or deletions? I now call for approval of the agenda. Mayor Porton?
Um.
Commissioner Placios?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. We'll now entertain the approval of the consent items. It's the draft minutes of our April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five working session. Commissioner Thompson?
So moved.
Commissioner Lachman?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All right. Motion carries. We are now moving on to our public comments. Remember to that your comments are limited to three minutes. There will be a big blaring notification on the screen to just help you so that we don't have to interrupt you think self-police. And also that the board will not respond to any questions or comments during the public comments period. And so we will ask Ms. Sandra to return to the podium. State your name and address for record.
My name is Eddie Samper, one oh four U Drive, Spring Lake. And I just have a few things, you know, the ones that I talked about earlier. And that's about the trash cans in the cars. And there's other things like the replacement of the grass that the city got up, you know, and they were putting pipes or something down in the, in different yards. And this has been over a year. And the grass has not been replaced in the people's yards, and it should be. Um, also, um, the road lines, those lines need to be repaired because if it's not repaired, people can have a serious accident when you're going across that bridge coming, going into our Fort Rag. Those lines need to be put in there because you see it every morning. I take my great-granddaughter to school on three oh one. And every morning you see people coming over on the side, you know, running almost into the cars until they realize that they've gotten over too far. The other thing is, um, if we can get a sign on Deerfield. But right now, that's the only one that I know that have kids running in the road. I don't know whether some of you that live in Deerfield know, notice the kids running in the road. And sometimes cars go a little bit more than twenty-five. And we need a sign saying it. Children playing because they get, they run out across the road on their bikes, on the little scooters and stuff like that. And we don't want that to happen. We don't want children to get killed. Um, and that's about, that's about it. I haven't looked around the other parts of the community that I know there are other children, but these kids, I see them every day. And so we need to get that taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra. Uh, Ms. Will? Approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Cynthia Wilt, thirty-three, twelve Hedgesmore Circle. And today I am not here to talk about appearance committee. Today I want to talk about our local tennis courts and pickleball. Last year, I was introduced to the game of pickleball. It was very fun. It was very fun to play. And so my friends in Anderson Creek invited us over to go and play over there. And their tennis courts, all their tennis courts also have pickleball court lines on them. So you could play either or on those courts. So after I had my time of pickleball courts at Anderson Creek, I came over to our Parks and Rec and I talked to Zee and I said, well, what about us getting some lines put out here on our courts? And he was excited about it. But when he introduced it to whoever he needed to talk to about that, he was denied. Glad, no, they couldn't do that. So the next thing he did was he, he did have some tape that he could put inside in the tent, in the gym and do some temporary lines in there. Unfortunately, the times that are available, I can't get to it because of work. And so it would be nice if we could have these tennis courts have those lines on them as well. Uh, and I don't know how temporary those lines are in the gym, if that's still going on. And I know there's a lot going on in the gym. So it'd be nice. So in future discussions that you may have with Cumberland Parks and Rec, uh, if maybe you could consider discussing adding lines to the tennis courts to where we could also play pickleball on the courts as well. And it is very good for you. It's easy on the body, but still gives you a lot of movement, a lot of great benefits. And I'm sure Fayetteville could tell you, Parks and Rec could tell you how beneficial they are because they've got a lot of courts, pickleball courts in Fayetteville. So we want some here, too. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we're now moving on to our presentations. And we will begin with a presentation that we were able to give out a few months back. Uh, one of our very own was recognized with a distinguished honor, one of the highest honors, the highest honor given by our governor, uh, the Longleaf Pine Award. And I believe her family members are here to accept on her behalf. Uh, but I would like to, in her honor, read this proclamation that we presented to her. Um, was it in Virginia? What was her birthday?
January.
January. Okay. And this is Pastor Wannita Troy of the Evangelical House of God, just right up the street off of Main Street. Uh, and it says, whereas Apostle Wannita Troy has been a steadfast beacon of hope, faith, and leadership within our community. And whereas in recognition of her outstanding contributions and unwavering commitment to service, Apostle Wannita Troy was honored with the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine Award in November twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Order of the Longleaf Pine is one of North Carolina's highest honors awarded to individuals who have proven record, have a proven record of exemplary service to their community and state. And whereas Apostle Troy has inspired countless individuals through her work and dedication, fostering unity, love, and compassion toward compassion in the town of Spring Lake. And whereas on Sunday, January twenty-sixth, Apostle Troy celebrated not only her outstanding achievements, but her ninety-third birthday. Isn't that awesome? Marking a significant milestone in her remarkable life. And whereas that day served as a tribute to her legacy and commitment to uplifting the lives of others, reminding us all of the profound impact one individual can have on a community. Now therefore, I, Kia Anthony, Mayor of the Town of Spring Lake, along with the Board of Commissioners, do hereby encourage all citizens to join in celebrating her extraordinary achievements and her ninety-three years of life filled with love and service and inspiration. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Spring Lake to be affixed on today, the twelfth of May, twenty twenty-five. So I would like to ask her family to join, um, to come up and receive this on her behalf. I know she couldn't be here, but again, um, community, this is a very, very prestigious award, again, one of the highest I've given from our governor's office. And so join me in admonishing her for what she's done and give her family a round of applause.
Thank you all. Thank you, the Town of Spring Lake, for such an honor. Uh, my mother-in-law, she is a very diligent worker. She loves the community. She, she taught at Spring Lake Middle for years when we were little, kids. Um, she has helped the community tremendously. Uh, Michelin Street here, she has bought most of the properties, re-modeled them, reestablished them for people of, of not so much lower class, but just with minimal financials uh, that they don't have to pay so much out of pocket for children and, and single mothers. And she's, the food drive, she's done so, she's done so, so much. We could go on and on for hours. I'm her daughter-in-law. I'm married to her eldest son. This is my husband's name, say, that's her grandbaby. That's, I think he's the baby grandbaby. And. Yes. This is the, uh, maybe knee-baby granddaughter, Tanisha, her husband Raymond. This is Michael's wife, Markel. And this is, no, she's the knee-baby. You're the knee-baby. Tanisha is before you. This is to me. And she has prayed them all through, very predominant working-class children. They're doing very well, and we thank you all for this prestigious award for her.
Thank you so much. And I do want to acknowledge that, um, she was one of two recipients. Uh, we had, was it last year? Was it this year? Um, Denise Murchison-Patton. You got her, Denise Murchison-Patton. Had a little blank bracelet for a second. Uh, she also received the Longleaf Pine Award. So that is, that's something extraordinary about our small, little town receiving the two recognitions, highest recognitions in the state. So that, to me, says a whole lot about our community. So let's give the both a round of applause. All right, and we'll continue on with acknowledgements of recent achievements. Mayor Porton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't think, uh, you came today, but is Mr. Bellamy here from Spring Lake Middle? No? Okay. So, uh, it is with great pride that we celebrate the naming of the Spring Lake Middle School Gymnasium in honor of Coach Leonard Bellamy. Uh, Coach Bellamy has been a valuable.
I'm sorry. I can be here on behalf of Mr. Bellamy. I also work at Spring Lake Middle.
Okay, so, um, he's been a valuable mentor and leader to countless students over the years, instilling in them the values of teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship. This recognition is a testament to his unwavering commitment to our youth and the lasting impact he has had on their lives. Additionally, we would like to extend a heartfelt congratulations to the young youth who participated and won the Manchester Elementary Pageant. Their dedication, talent, and enthusiasm were truly inspiring, and they represent the bright future of our community. And commend their hard work and accomplishments which reflect, which reflect the importance of nurturing confidence and leadership in our children. These achievements not only enhance the pride taken in our community, but also serve to inspire a few generations. And, uh, the mayor also did a, um, resolution for Coach Bellamy, which was read, asking that, uh, I'm not going to read it now, but it's in the paper.
Well, let's, again, I love a pardon our residents, so one more round of applause. Yeah, these people, these people are majorly important, especially those that are poor in our children, giving back to the less fortunate. Um, these are people we should recognize as often as we can, um, and as loudly as we can. All right. So right on par with our public comments, we will ask Mr. Gibson to approach the podium. Um, we'll have an update on our Spring Lake Parks and Rec renovation plans. Mr. Michael Gibson, the Director of Fayetteville-Cumberland County Parks and Rec.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. Um, there's a PowerPoint presentation. Just want to make sure that the audience can see and see what we're doing and how we're doing. See if you can push it. Yeah, just go to the first one. Thank y'all. Um, we've been, uh, working and, um, on the Mendoza Park. Um, there's been, um, some work done, some substantial stuff, uh, that we've done out there with the playground units, taking out the, um, the old ones, adding the new ones. As you can see here, um, adding the new, the new five to twelve-year-old unit. Uh, adding the new unit, um, improving the building that's there, um, the bathrooms, um, uh, the curving is in, the playground unit is in. The only thing that we're waiting on now is for the rubber installer to come, which he was here. Um, the rain has just stopped him. Hopefully, over the next two or three days, we can get it. Um, and he can start that process, and then, um, that piece will be done with the playground units, um, in the building. Um, right now, uh, the, uh, the parking lot has been sprayed and striped, restripped. Uh, we're working on the shelters, um, making sure that the roofs are, are adequate and we're gonna repaint those. There's one shelter that's gonna be moved, uh, and placed on the other side of this playground unit so that you'll have some shelter inside the playground area. We'll do a shade structure over the, uh, over one of the playground units, the little smaller one. We'll put a shade structure over there, um, so that there's some kind of shade in, in that environment with the, with the playground, the smaller playground unit. Um, on the ball fields, uh, there's one field that, uh, that's obviously getting used more than the other ones. Uh, that we're going to do a renovation on. Um, there needs to be some, um, and, and when I say hard renovation, what I mean by that is we're going to probably script it, and we have a machine that'll go through and plane it, take down two or three inches. We're gonna add some soil to it so that it, it drains better, uh, and then we'll re-sod it. Um, but so you'll see, more than likely, you're gonna see a fencing that goes around the new sod so people get a time to, to root. Um, and then we'll take it away and then they can use it. Uh, they're gonna, uh, put some new fence cap around the field, take down some of the old, uh, where the scorekeepers were sitting. Um, take those wooden structures down and put up a metal structure with a, a tarp on it and do that all around the ball fields. Um, and then, um, that'll basically be the, the whole renovation projects will be done. Um, and you can see what the budgets are. Uh, the playground unit was about, uh, that was the, uh, the, uh, our half price off. Um, normally that, that playground unit is, um, about a hundred and eighty thousand. So when you do the, um, they give you a granting process, a dollar for dollar. Um, so we got it for ninety-eight, the installation, um, then the, uh, the rubber install. And, and what that does is, you know, people say something about the number, but what that is, is once you put that rubber in with the, uh, polyurethane glue, you're talking about something that's gonna last you about twenty years. So when you do the math on it, um, the, what you save in labor and mulch, um, you, you won't have to worry about it for a long time. Um, and it'll take the heat, it'll take the abuse that's the kids are gonna give it so you don't, you don't have to deal with it. And one of the biggest things that we're finding out throughout the county when we're putting in rubber now is the ADA accessibility that you have now with the kids. Um, and they, they'll say that rubber, I mean, that mulch is, is accessible. Yeah, I don't know. So we're, we're, we're changing, and it's every time that we get an opportunity to add that value, we're doing it. Um, so the, those children who have, uh, special needs will have that ability to move around. Um, and then you, you'll see the additional playground unit items that's, and then the building renovations, um, the picnic shelter relocation, um, and then the striping of the parking lot and then the field renovation. So we've come up with about four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars worth of improvements over there. Probably, um, hopefully in the next twenty to thirty days, good Lord willing, and the weather holds up, we'll be done. And you can do some kind of ribbon cutting or rededication. Um, and we'll probably be able to give you at least a ten-day notice of when we're gonna be finished. Uh, you can go out and inspect the place and say, you know, we like this change, we like that change. One of the things we're gonna do, too, is if you look like, let me see if this other one does. No, it doesn't. If you look right through the back of that shelter, one of the things that, that is, that we're, we're having a conversation with is that the state, their property line comes right up against Mendoza Park. So what we're asking them, and we've been having a conversation, is, is that we would like to go in and not clear-cut, but what we would like to do is go in and mow thirty feet back from the property line so that anything that's two inches and above stays. Anything that's less than two inches, we're gonna mulch down. So that when you're sitting in a shelter or when you pull up in the park, the, the wooded area is not right up against you. So you have, you have that freedom to be able to see, and it just makes you more comfortable if you're sitting in those shelters that run the length of the property. Um, and it just gives you a better feel of safety. So we're, we're having that conversation with them to see if they're comfortable with allowing us to do that. And then that'll get done once we get some paperwork and they allow us to do it. Um, but other than that, that's it. Everything's going pretty good. Um, we don't see any major issues. Um, and, and, and we're working as, as quickly as we can. Any questions?
Of course, no questions. First off, thank you.
No problem.
The community thanks you.
Oh.
Um, soon as those lime green pieces went up, I started getting phone calls, emails, hey, use Facebook messages. We see the park, we see the park. Um, it's been a long time coming, but it looks great. And I appreciate you for using high-quality equipment to give Spring Lake the exact same access as other recreation centers have. That means a whole lot, and I'm sure, um, the community thanks you guys for the work that you put in. Um, our budget thanks you for looking at these numbers. Um, but, uh, hearing questions from, directly from the audience, I just wanted, the pickleball idea, it's a wonderful idea.
Um, you, you, you probably got an answer that's an answer for other communities. If that is not the answer for Spring Lake, and Spring Lake is comfortable with dual stripes on their tennis courts, then if, and if that's what Spring Lake wants, then, then we'll do it. The other communities are not comfortable with that.
Got it. Well, thank you for that clarification. And that's something that we can discuss further down the line, but I appreciate that clarity. Um, other things I wanted to ask is about the other parks in the Parks and Rec system. Will they be, are they in line for updates as well?
Yes. There's, there's a conversation, um, there's a conversation that's gonna take place that will help give Spring Lake, in my opinion, access to funding. So we just need to solidify that conversation to make sure that that is something that can be done. Once that happens, then we'll have a different conversation. Um, Spring Lake will have the ability to say yes or no. And then if that happens, then we'll move forward.
Sounds good. Um, thank you. Commissioner Lachman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gibson, I appreciate you coming out here and updating us tonight. Uh, Mendoza Park has been our flagship for quite some time. Uh, you inherited a, a mess. I understand that. It's been over a year since that equipment has come out. Uh, you came and talked to us before, and, and I was trying to pinpoint you down to, to kind of when things were gonna get started. And you had mentioned that you were looking in November, uh, starting to get things together. It didn't happen until January. Uh, you were in the middle of May, and I get it, the weather happens, but it happens all the time. Uh, we need stuff for our kids. We need our, our playgrounds. Uh, I was anticipating a much earlier start to, to being able to have, as you said, a ribbon cutting for them out there. Uh, the equipment looks beautiful. I, I applaud the, the rubberized surface out there. I get it that the improvements that are being made is gonna be something that's going to last decades and, and not years. So I appreciate that as we go through here. Uh, I do want to also let the people know out here that when you all started, you all put sixty-seven thousand dollars, that HVAC, you put that in, building upgrades, you put that in there. So as people look out there and see Mendoza Park, and they're like, why isn't it complete? Uh, there's been a number of, of things that the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Parks and Rec has done inside the buildings as well as outside. And Mayor, thank you for addressing the other parks because as Chief Jarman would say, if we've got stuff for our kids to do, they're not gonna be breaking into cars. They're not gonna be out there stealing. They're gonna be healthy. They're, they're gonna be playing. They're gonna put phones down. But sometimes. And Ms. Wills, thank you very much for, for mentioning pickleball. Those, those are things that we need to, to continue to address, not only to the board, but to the Parks and Rec so that we are servicing our community and not just providing just stuff. So I appreciate that. Um, I do want to ask you, who handles stuff that's inside the building, events and so forth?
It, it depends on, one of the things that we, Spring Lake can handle their own events. If it's a recreation event, then we would handle it from downtown, and recreation is recreation. We try to make sure that townships have the ability to reap the revenue from their facilities. Um, and we don't dictate that. So it depends on what the event is and who's doing it and how it's being done. Um, so if there's a conversation that needs to take So if there's a conversation that needs to take place on what that is, then we can do that, and if we need to acquiesce, then we would.
Okay. And also, who handles the events and concerns around the other parks? Not just what goes on at two forty-five, but our other locations throughout the town?
Well, I mean, you can check with your recreation staff, if they're not being responsive, then you can definitely call James McMillan, who's the Assistant Director for Recreation. James Powell is the Assistant Director for Parks. So whatever those things are, and what realm they're in, those are the two gentlemen that would handle it. If there's a business question, our Assistant Director for Management is Jessica Leggett, and she would answer those questions as they pertain to finances or funding. And then, if they don't give you a quality answer, then call me.
Okay. You mentioned the work on the ballpark stuff there. I'm gonna pitch you wholly in there again, I'm gonna ask you that with the removing of the soil, the weeds, and putting sod down there, which, are we looking at this year?
Oh, no, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda, it would've been, it would've been, they're poised to work now and make that happen, because once the rubber goes in, then our window is very short. People are not going to understand why they can't use it, why you can't do a ribbon cutting. So we're in a very small window, and we're comfortable being able to go out there, rip it up, till it up, grade it back out, and roll the sod back out. What you would have to do is give us some grass on how Mother Nature allows the weather for the Bermuda to take off. The temperatures have to be about seventy degrees at night for it to wake up and do what it's supposed to do, and it looks like you're gonna do that this weekend. So we're comfortable in making that happen. The rubber guys are real good, it should take them about a week and a half to actually work on it and get it done, and you'll see us simultaneously making that happen too. So I would say, if everything goes well, within twenty-five to thirty days, we'll be done.
Okay. And when are we gonna look at start having balls for our kids?
You said balls?
Softball, baseball, some sort of recreation out there for them to participate here in Spring Lake instead of going to Fayetteville?
Well, you know, I looked into that the last time, and what we're having is, there needs to be more teams, because Spring Lake can't field a league of its own, 'cause they don't have enough teams in one age group. So you have one team that's, say, twelve U, you have one team that's fourteen U, and you might have four other teams or five other teams that are all way in Grace Creek. So it wouldn't be right for to send all four of those teams down to one environment where there's only one team. So what we're looking at is working with the center staff there to get out into the community, because when you go to the elementary schools, there's plenty of kids running around there. So we have to figure out why they're not signing up to play ball. Now, don't get me wrong, everybody doesn't play ball. So we need to figure out what that is, that they wanna interact with, and understand what we can offer them or their parents to get them to sign up and play. Because when, once we finish with Mendoza Park, there're gonna be a ton of kids out there. So we just need to understand why they're not buying our product, so to speak.
We've got a gentleman that's trying to get baseball and softball reinvigorized here in Spring Lake, and so he's kinda taken that upon himself to kinda get things going with that. So we're looking forward to having our kids play ball and having fun here in Spring Lake.
And we look forward to it too.
Mayor, that's all I got? Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much for that update. I know the kids are looking forward to it, and I just wanted to, one of the things I noticed is, we used to have signs all over the place saying time to register for baseball or time, and I haven't really seen those lately, and I'm not sure if they're sending the notices to the schools to be, to let kids know that they are having that. But also, as far as funding, when we had the Cumberland County's Mayor's Coalition here Friday, Colonel Milton mentioned something, Nixon, I'm sorry, Colonel Nixon mentioned something about visa funding, have you heard of it?
No, ma'am.
Okay, it's advanced, advanced communities infrastructure funding, and he said that, he had mentioned that Jacksonville had gotten a ton of money because of their military community, and that we should be able to take advantage of that as well. So, I can email you?
Please.
Yeah, I have it, you know, so I can send it to you.
Yes, ma'am.
What, can I send it to you? Okay, awesome, yeah. And other than that, oh, one other thing. Odell Road, there is a park in Pope Plains, there's nothing yet.
Where is this at now?
Off Odell Road. I think it's called Pope Plains Park. Yeah, still living up, I moved by there in the southeast, maybe it's listed. Yeah, it's listed.
Send me the address so I can Google it, I'm not sure I understand exactly where that is too.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One alibi, I know that we had talked in the past in regards to quarterly benchmarks, that the town has to respond so that we can make sure that we meet our criteria for the funding with that. Do we have any updates on where we stand? Mr. Roy may have to jump in here on this one.
In particular, I am gonna have a grant update later in the agenda.
Okay.
But specifically for the Joes, I think we're coming to the point of where we can close out that rate, which will be one of the, excellent.
Yes, very much so. Better part.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
All right, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Looking forward to hearing from you in a few months.
Yes, ma'am. No, 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 not a few months, not a few months.
In this capacity, so you can tell us what you guys are doing.
Okay, all right, all right.
We want our partner to take their hands up this next time. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All right, we are now moving on to Agenda Item D, Yard of the Month, Commissioner Plaschek.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Appearance Committee honors our neighbors and our citizens who upkeep and maintain their property in a way that ultimately beautifies the town of Spring Lake. And so, monthly, we have our Yard of the Month. We have three winners, Betty Hobson, John Clark, and Wayne Fairclough, are any of you here today? If not, that's okay, we'll get these certificates out to them, let's give it up to our citizens.
Our citizens win awards and they keep their yards clean.
That's it.
They're doing great things. All right, now we are moving on to our presentation, D E D zero-one-zero-zero-two-four, Spring Lake Townhomes, Richard Fagan, our planner from Cumberland County Plan. Hello.
Hello, good evening, Madam Chair members of the board. Well, good evening, my name's Richard Fagan, I'm a planner too for Cumberland County Plan inspections. The case you have before you tonight is a preliminary plan for a project called Spring Lake Townhomes. It is a twenty-six lot townhome development centrally located within the town of Spring Some general site data to provide some character. The proposed development is located centrally within the town of Spring Lake and is situated off of Chapel Hill Road between North Brad Boulevard and Neal Street. The combined total parcel acreage is four point six acres, the zoning district where the project sits within is R six, the total potential density permitted is forty-two lots, given the acreage and the zoning district. There is an existing single-family residential structure on the property, which will, which is planned to be demolished, and as you can see highlighted here, there are two subject parcels per Cumberland County G I S. The applicant has submitted a recombination plaque, recombining both those parcels into one lot in anticipation of this proposed townhome development. And it was recorded at the Register of Deeds with the plat book one fifty-one, page one six-three, for, you know, your records. The proposed development overview, there will be twenty-six lots proposed, the lots range in size from seventeen hundred square feet to twenty-four hundred square feet. The streets are designated as private and as proposed conform to the town of Spring Lake street design standards. There is approximately sixteen thousand square feet of recreation area, which does include a pickleball court.
Water of the day.
And a children's playground. There's approximately twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet of common area. There have been wetlands as well as a stream located on the site, and that has been delineated as open space. And the landscaping has been reviewed by staff, and it does conform to the town of Spring Lake's landscaping standards. So in addition, the proposed private streets, recreational, open space, and common area will all be maintained by the Development's Homeowners Association. So in short, the proposed preliminary plan is consistent with the town of Spring Lake zoning and development ordinances. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions you have. In addition, the engineers for the project are here from Curry Engineering, who are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I love this pretty little package, it just makes things really easy, especially when I see things like HMO, the developers' movement. H O A, you know what I mean. But I said HMO. You guys knew what I meant, H O A. I've been all twisted up today. The private streets, open space, that is great, that'll be maintained by the H O A, that's very important. So, Commissioner Laskin, I believe you're writing first.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the general site slide that's up there?
Yes.
On this one here, we had an issue with the cemetery right off of Chapel Hill and Brad Boulevard with the runoff that occurred. One, there's a leaky pipe, well, almost a broken pipe, but two, the runoff that happens off of Southland Plaza and goes over in that direction. How does that lake and stream that you had mentioned, how does that affect that property to there?
Yeah, I'll defer to the engineer.
Hello, board, thank you for your time tonight, I'm Derek Matthews with Curry Engineering. See if I can get to the site plan here. Sorry, trying to, okay, so on the, we're looking at Plan North, on the western side, that's where the stormwater control measure will be. Right now, I believe we're having drainage in the existing stream there or wetlands from north to south, that's the direction it will come, and essentially, will all come from, essentially from Plan East to the wetlands and from Plan West to the wetlands, and then south in that way. Is that the area you were referring to?
It was not on that property, but the water runoff was going off of eighty-seven and Chapel Hill, that area, and as it just flowed through there, that was my concern, is what you were addressing.
Okay, so you're mentioning the property north of this property?
West.
West?
Yes.
Okay, so west. So again, what we should have is with the stormwater control measure, we'll have a berm there, essentially to prevent any off-site drainage coming on to the property. So, but what we could do is, if that presents a problem, especially in the ground clearing and erosion control stage, we can just put a grass well there to kinda mitigate any kind of onsite drainage. We just don't want any of the homes to have any kind of drainage issues if there's a large storm, right? And so that's a priority, so.
I do believe that issue was addressed by D O T when it collapsed in. I believe D O T, this was a few years back. This street collapsed from that runoff.
Okay.
There was some erosion underground, that corner, the K bend, D O T came out and they repaired that, so I do believe that the runoff that you're referring to was addressed by D O T.
Is that being piped across the road? I assume, because everything's still gotta go south, right? All our drainage's still gotta go south, is that now piped under Chapel Hill Road?
I don't know.
Okay, I can check into it.
Yeah.
No problem.
With the runoff from Southland Plaza, it goes that direction, so that was my concern, big heavy rains, you know, getting a little bit of rain now, but it's, once in five-year, five-hundred-year floods that happen twice in two years.
Exactly, right. Once every two-year, five-hundred-year storms.
Yep.
Yeah, so it should travel under Chapel Hill Road, but if not, we'll make sure it
Commissioner Plaschek?
Thank you. I know these are gonna be privately maintained streets, or is this gonna be a gated street?
No.
No, it's gonna be open, okay. Thank you, that was it.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question, I have an admin question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Plaschek.
Thank you. When did we get this presentation?
Today.
Today? Is there any way we, from the county?
No.
Is there any way we can get this beforehand?
Sure.
This specific one? So we had an issue in-house with some of our emails, and I couldn't read everything, so I had to come in early today to try to get an understanding of it, but this presentation is different than what we were originally giving our agenda package last week, so this is very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Perth?
Thank you. I do have a question, do you know around what the rental rate will be for these townhomes?
I've got a gentleman calling Hickman from the developer, and he can kinda speak to that.
Afternoon. These will be sold, so not rented out. These will be listed and sold for market value at the time that they're finished.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Roy?
Well, the market value.
Depends on how fast we finish them. Could be different, if it takes a year, two years.
So I'm gonna ask an engineering question, it's really not an engineering question, and I'm doing it on behalf of others that are in the room. Why pickleball courts instead of building a tennis court?
Pickleball is popular. Tennis courts take up a lot of space.
That's exactly what I expected you to say. Pickleball is popular, and tennis is not as popular as it used to be, right? So a lot of communities are revisiting this idea of how do you repurpose tennis courts? And it leads into a conversation regarding striping, lights, dedicated pickleball courts, even the thing in terms of the gym, you know, the hours in which you can use it for pickleball versus basketball area it may be. So that's why I wanted to ask you that question. I know it's not an engineering question, it's popular, takes up less space, and therefore it's cheaper. So, sorry.
Well, I'm disappointed, right?
We'll ask these questions in the future.
Absolutely. 'Cause the word of the day is pickleball.
I have lived with pickleball for years and years and years.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I thank you very much for your presentation. We'll move on to Agenda Eight, New Business, and so, do we, we don't have any further questions for the county or, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve or deny D E D zero-one-zero-zero-dash-two-four. Mayor, put in?
No move.
Commissioner Plaschek?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we look forward to, oh! We've got a commissioner that's on via Zoom. Motion carries, we look forward to seeing you. Motion carries, we look forward to seeing beautiful townhomes here soon. Thank you.
So good night, good night.
Good night. All right. Agenda item eight B is a resolution twenty-five oh four, resolution authorizing Mr. Roy to file an application for grant funding from N C D E Q for the Spring Lake Water Valve Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Roy, would you like to add anything to this?
I will if you like, but I think you've done very well. It's really simple, I think the staff has already briefed you in a previous meeting on this. This is just really administrative nature, we would have to have it adopted by resolution requirement.
Motion, Commissioner Lachman?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that Resolution twenty-five dash zero-four, resolution authorizing the town manager to file an application for grant funding for the N C D E Q. I will?
Yes.
For the Spring Lake Water Valve Rehabilitation Project.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Pertham?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries to approve the Resolution twenty-two-five oh four. Now we are at Resolution twenty-two-five oh five, a resolution for the Town of Spring Lake Board of Commissioners to adopt the Town of Spring Lake Strategic Plan, which is highly important. As you know, every year that we have sat in seats, we have been guided by a strategic plan. This new strategic plan is particularly, particularly important because it was not just the work of the board, this was the work of the board, staff, community. It was a labor of love, very intensive, we've been working on it for several months. And so we want to go ahead and support the resolution to adopt our strategic plan. I am open for any discussion? If not? If there's no discussion, I understand a motion. Mayor Pertham?
Still moved.
Commissioner Lachman?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, mayor.
Commissioner Lachman?
Mr. Roy, I'd like to thank you and like my staff for all the hard work that went into this. We did have some public that did attend these meetings. This is going to set our future for the next fourteen years, work further going forth, getting this going, so. I appreciate the effort, getting the staff involved, getting the commissioners involved in this. So you'd like to pass the praise along, but I'd like to tell you thank you.
Absolutely, yes, I can do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion? Okay, I'm sorry. Mayor Pertham?
I also wanted to praise Mr. Roy because when he and myself and Mayor Anthony showed up in rural Chapel Hill Fair and Carrie, he was in one of his little boos. Because he thought it was going to be SWAC analysis, and then he took this and has had so much fun with it, and this is what we have. I encourage everybody listening, everybody who's in here, to read it. This is what we are going to be working towards in this town. So I think everybody within the sound of our voices should know what this, what this plan is. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
The pause is for Rodney Mendoza. The motion carries to approve Resolution twenty-two-five, our strategic plan. You guys are awesome. All right, Resolution twenty-two-five oh six, declaring surplus personal property. I will allow Mr. Roy to spound on that.
It's one vehicle. It's broken, the cost of repair is six thousand dollars. It's not worth six thousand dollars, and so we would like to surplus it and sell it for as much as we can get out of it, and someone else can't drive six thousand dollars.
Awesome. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five oh six, Resolution twenty-two-five oh six. Commissioner Thompson?
Still moved.
Commissioner Lachman?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we'll move on to A E, our grant update, Mr. Roy.
I will make this one pretty short, even though it says comprehensive. For one reason, because I'm not prepared to be comprehensive, because I can't be comprehensive as we're continuing to chase things and do different things. So case in point, we have a grant for five hundred thousand to do a sewer project, and we have connected it to another grant for three hundred thousand. The goal was to complete, I think I'm going to get this wrong, but hopefully I'm right, Regina and Mac. All right, so I've got it right, yes. The problem is, when we put both of those projects out to bid as a whole, the project costs come in at about one point eight million dollars. So we only have about half of the funding available, which means we need to limit the scope to one street or the other. So which street is the most important? My street, but we can't operate that way. We've got to figure out what's going to be utility, and I mean that in terms of serving most people. So we're backing up, and we're trying to change the scope to that grant to get it done. And I will have a summarizing segment at the end there, too. We also have one that we refer to as the Mertzburg Park, which technically is the Little River Park. We want to start changing the way we talk about that property, as Mertzburg property is the river. The town, staff, contractors have went out and graded and ground, all the stuff that we're talking about, putting little trees down. So now you have a wide swath that you can actually ride through there, assuming it's not wet. When it's wet, there are some areas that are impassable, not necessarily by foot traffic, but some of the vehicle traffic that you have to be aware of. So what remains is the relocation of our gazebo, and I'm not sure exactly when that's happening.
I think tomorrow.
See, you're helping me out there. Relocation gazebo, we'll have to build a wall, we'll have to build some kind of little wooden bridges over some of these storm drains, just to kind of make it so walking. What we can't do is convert a bulk of the property into a use that is not conservation. So we're limited in what we can do, we can't go do bricks and mortar projects on this thing. One of the pieces that remains a barrier for us to overcome is wanting to be lucky and access. And so Jason is working on that in terms of trying to, the project, try to figure out the best place to do this. It seems to me that we would be better off utilizing a parking lot that's already in place and walking across the street, rather than going across the street and building a new impervious asphalt parking lot, detractively. That's about conservation, why do we want to create a stormwater problem when this property is already there? Let's take an access and talk about people who've already got parking lots. Specifically, it's the churches across the street. And so if we can say, hey, can we help with this? You know, this is part of the park project, and here it is, I think it's a limited strategy for our community, rather than trying to convert this property to some other use that's too problematic for us to maintain in the future. The A I A M R F, this one is of the utmost importance. A I A stands for Asset Inventory Assessment. They're going out and evaluating all of our water sewer stuff, okay? So you just did a resolution to apply for another grant to do water valve rehab. That's one component of our assets. And when you look at the maintenance cycle, assets can become liabilities. And so we're on the verge of these things being huge liabilities for us, and we're struggling with what we do. The M R F piece talks about merger, reasonableization, feasibility. So the two components coming together represent, from this Asset Inventory Assessment, we have an early indication and a letter from our engineer stating that we're looking at about eighty million dollars worth of repairs and upgrades. And so the problem that we're going to face is, well, how do you fund eighty million dollars annually? When you're a town, how do you do it? So you need to have some type of a master plan about where we're going to roll this out, what we're going to do. So that comes back to the point of utility. If you've got a water line that's feeding two thousand people, I'm going to use Odell, the fake Odell as an example, that main that comes through there feeds all of those, it's vitally important that that one is fully operational, maintained. That doesn't mean it's not important for the little two inches feeding this little cul-de-sac. It's just that this one as a utility impacts more people. So we have to come up with a C I P of how we roll this out. Because if I, if you, or if anybody in the public was faced with, I would like to borrow eighty million dollars, the first question I would ask is, where are you going to spend it? And how fast are you going to do it? So sitting it in the bank and then not getting anywhere is unacceptable, regardless of what these grants are. That's what I mean about closing these plans out, best projects completed, budget. To get to a completed project, you've got to have a definitive timeline, about what you're going to do, the charts associated. This is what we'll have to develop in this A I A. My disappointment is that we have to complete this A I A M R F grant process by December of twenty-twenty-six. And I know that I have talked about it and dealt with it over the last year. And what I would really like to do is cross the finish line on getting this Asset Inventory Assessment done. Because quit talking about what we're going to do, let's talk about what we have to do, okay? And let's get to it. That's just my take on it. So that's the easiest upgrade that I can give about that particular one. And then I'll circle back around. We have a computer grant, which what's outstanding is boxes and boxes and boxes of scanning of documents, so that we can go digital. So we want to clean up all of our storage space in and around City Hall to include boxes of dust. Just to be, you know, what are we going to do? How do we scan? We have to archive this, this is where Carly and the clerk that is involved. Another part of that is a software change or update. In this year's budget, we're facing a twelve percent increase in our financial software errors. That's like eighty-seven thousand dollars, forgive me for not being able to cite that off the top of my head. And so if you say, how much?
It's going from fifty-two thousand to fifty-nine thousand.
All right, so twelve percent increase, fifty-nine thousand, what are we getting out of that? So if you go to finance and say, well, I want to change the software so we get a better return to their product, they're going to say, no, you can't change it now because they have the audit now. You don't change the horse you're riding on in the middle of the race. We've got to get through this audit process, so that's kind of a holdup and a hangup. And we're working with that, and I think the financial director will tell you that I'm probably pressuring him two or three times, we get this done, get this done. But there's a lot of stuff that we still have to deal with in terms of making sure we clean up our books before we present something, and it's little stuff, you know, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, we haven't booked this. It's an accountant's nightmare, and so we're working through it, and with, among other things. So that's part of the computer grant. And then finally, the Mendoza project, you got an update in regards to that today. Hopefully, Commissioner Lachman talked about the quarterly reports. The, I've already submitted the reports for April, they were due, so January, February, March first quarter, it's due April tenth. So the next reports will be April day, June due July tenth. It is my goal to close out the Mendoza in its entirety in July tenth, done, over with, check, move on to something else to close this on. I will not be able to close out the others, but we will continue to progress on the mission. So that's what I mean about a comprehensive update. If you're tracking everything from applying for another grant and the strategic plan, you'll see that all of these things are interrelated. How do we do it? And it's all this bigger, bigger picture of a matrix of what we're trying to accomplish. It's not one single issue. If it was easy, it would already be done, and we'll continue to take the struggle and challenge this every day with our annual budgets, with our grants, with whatever we can do, and how we can move forward with it. So that's in a nutshell, I'm sure I forgot something. There is one thing that I want to circle back around. There are two different types of grants here that we're talking about, just in general. One of them is we'll call D E Q grants. The others are Office of State Management Budget Grants. The O S M budgets, in this particular case, Mendoza Park, Veterans Park is the one I forgot about. How can you forget that? Veterans Park? Veterans Park?
Computers.
Computer grants, those we have cash in the bank, okay? And we're spending that now. What bothers me about the A I A, A I A M R F, is that those are D E Q grants, they're reimbursable rates. So until we expense it, we don't get reimbursed. And in the absence of our audits, we may be put on a funding suspension list, which means now we can't cross the finish line over to A I A. If we had finished this last year, we would be facing that. There's a struggle and challenge, trying to keep those problems moving, keep them moving, keep them moving. Veterans Park, I hope to close that out, too, since, I forgot that one. I hope to close it out by this quarter as well. We're close, it's all about grass, and a few little things there, we're moving across the street to additional parking and some access, so that people don't park on the grass that they planted. So we're continuing to move on that, and I much appreciate to Steve Wing, Charles Zeps, William Texoff, Terrell, forgive me, he escaped you, his last name? Melvin. I want to say Owens, but I think that's like a football player. But Terrell Melvin, and so I want to give a shout out to those guys who day in, day out are watering that grass, pulling that hose, pulling those weeds, mowing that grass. I made them change the rock three times.
It looks thick.
And they're like, well, I will take what they say. They changed the rock three times. And so we all get along, and they're doing a wonderful job, and I'd like for them to receive, if not most, all credits, or all, especially for what they've done. They and Steve as well, trying to manage that project and keep it going. With that, that's kind of a quick, down and dirty, but granted, they want to give it, because it connects to our lunch talks.
Any questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Lachman?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Roy, you stated very eloquently that our audits, that we want to get those done, and Jimmy, we want to get those done, so that we can finally give ourselves a point of going forward instead of always looking back on these audits. So the quicker we can get moving on this, I know that I would appreciate that, I know our residents deserve that, so that you can make things better for them.
It is a cloud, it's just hovering.
I know.
We're going to get there, sir.
Thank you, mayor.
Absolutely. All right, we will continue on with our audit committee review and discuss proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, Mr. Roy.
All right, let me back up and put on this. It is not my intent to go over every single spec sheet that I sent y'all via email. In fact, that is probably more my mistake. My goal was to discuss just a few kind of at a high level and ask you guys a question. Do you want to have a special call being for the Audit Review Committee? Yet it's laid out as an audit review being. So I guess it's one and the same at the same time, it's different, all right? So the goal for me is to say, where we're at, what have we done? The budget that we're talking about is driven by state statute. It's not something that we just decide to do this or decide to do that. And so I want you to keep in mind that there's a timeline that we have to do. So the department heads and directors and chiefs have to submit to me, as the budget officer, their budget requests by April thirty. I was requested to provide our draft budget to the local government commission, May the first. No. The statute says that they submit them to me the third. I'm not going to take a scramble now and get you something made the first. Just no, I'm not doing that. I don't need to be me, I'm just not doing it. This is, the budget that you do this year sets the stage for the next five years, period. Make no mistake about it. This is big, big, big old. And so then I have to present the budget draft to the board by June first, so let's just say May thirty-first. Now, in between that is a creation called the Audit Review Committee. There's nothing that drives that by statute, that's driven by choice. So we have a meeting cancellation because of Memorial Day on May twenty-sixth. And so I'm sitting here scratching my head, and Carly and I argued in the last week, trying to get this agenda out. She was there, I was here. So the agenda comes out, and guess what, we're still there, all right? And that's our fault, that's mine, I don't care, okay? So at the end of the day, I want the board to have a review of the budget before I send it to the L G C, period. Now, I've got a very short, small window to do that. I don't want to send it to them May the first, and you guys have seen it. I don't want to send it to them May the first, and you guys have seen it at all. That was what my goal was to do. So you got a lot of information, I don't plan on going over that. Um, but I just want to kind of highlight and share a couple of components that we talked about. Um, on the screen, you will see what we refer to now as the budget reduction target or our budget reduction strategy. To be very, very clear, we've talked about this over and over again. That with the, the change in distribution of the sales tax. Today's paper says Cumberland County approves sales tax agreement, something, say headline, pop a poll. So with the change in distribution, we're going to lose about one point four million dollars. Now, Jimmy will give you a whole different revenue number, one point three nine six seven, I don't know. But, uh, one point four million dollars, look at it. Yeah, he hit you to say the right thing. So we're looking at one point four million. And we struggled with that number all along. So we come up with budget reduction strategy or targets of a million, eight hundred thousand, so forth. And we finally settled on four hundred thousand. That's because between the first conversation and the last conversation, we had a revaluation take place and property values increased by roughly sixty percent. So that's gonna generate more and add the lower tax, um, to take the place of the loss in sales tax. But it's not enough. So we still have to face this budget reduction strategy. So we put it to all the department heads, uh, Chief Jarman is here. Um, even though, let's pick on the police department since he's here. Uh, fire department's not here, we can pick on them too. We'll pick on the police department since he's here, but, uh, the police department with a budget reduction target under that four hundred thousand column had to come up with a reduction of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is roughly a percentage of their budget, of the total general fund budget. Um, I want you to know that the police department, if you go over there and you see the budget request and then the over/under is six fifty-six, three two one, over. They still met their budget reduction target of one twenty-five, even though they're six hundred fifty-six thousand over. The question's, well, how did they do that? So they did some administrative, uh, stuff in terms of staffing, looking around, doing some stuff with lieutenants. But then, well, why are they still over? Why didn't they make that cut, that budget cut? It's because of things that we have to budget. So this will be the first year that I'm aware of, that things will be, um, in a program budget as opposed to, I don't want to use the term hidden too loosely, but, um, we usually put stuff over here, put stuff over here, put stuff over there. And you really don't know what the cost of anything is. Um, an example of that, picking on the police, is gonna be debt service and police departments. I'll go up and talk about the CIP here in just a minute. Um, and so you can't say the police department budget is two million and then have a million dollars of debt service over here for the police department. Technically, that should be into the program costs in delivering that service. So that's why they come up with, you'll see there, it says that six hundred fifty-six, add code enforcement officer to seventy-three K. That adding code enforcement officer is part of the strategic plan. It is initiative that we have to undertake. Um, if we don't, we keep getting the same thing. And somebody's got to focus on this. Uh, the police chief can't do it day in, day out, so we need somebody to do it. It's been housing, other stuff. But what you'll see later is where we also made cuts. You'll see in there, uh, increase overtime by ten K, career development incentive. This is of critical importance to me, I think as a manager, is that I constantly tell all of our department heads that their response, our supervisor in general, the growth and the development of the people they supervise is of the utmost importance. Because it allows us to increase our strength, increase our momentum, where people are firing in different, uh, in the same direction, moving forward, strategic plan, whatever it may be, put them in there. That's why we put boots in the strategic plan meeting. So they're not being the one getting this stuff, they're part of this creation. But how do we do, what are we gonna do? So career development incentives is built into the budget, every budget. Uh, matching 401K, we talked about those, cell phone stipends, so forth and so on. Uh, I'm not gonna go into all the detail. But you'll see there also, it says five police vehicles and three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a moving target, okay? So that six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar increase includes three hundred and thirty-five in capital outlay. So fifty percent of that increase is just for police departments. Now, you'll see later, and if you look to the budget, the line out of budgets, you'll see, well, that's likely will be transferred to debt service. Okay, so it will still be police budget program costs, but now we're covering it as debt service. We've talked about debt being a tool that we use. Um, to, to, to take and make sure that our people are man, money, machines, materials, equipment, their staff, the things that you do. What are the services you want to provide? So that's the worst one, is the police department. Thank you, Lieutenant, sir. I'm picking on y'all, trust me, I'm, I'm not being me, I'm just picking on you. Because we know what we're trying to do and collectively, all of staff is trying to put those parts. The police department hit that target and then I ran them their parade. We put this stuff in there, we put that stuff in there. And so that's what changes, uh, the market, that's why it's important in blue and red. Some of them, however, uh, Carly, uh, is fifty-five thousand dollars. The target for Carly was fifteen thousand, but she made it fifty-five thousand. Oh, she's pretty good. Uh, but you'll notice it's a rip in the office system. Basically, it's a change of staffing. Staffing is a huge component, so anytime we deal with, uh, budget reductions or strategies, it comes down on what you do with the staffing side of it. Right? You can do all kinds of things, but you can't do a little bit of everything to be effective. I tell a story, um, especially coming from the fire department. You know, give me a hundred firefighters and no water. Give me a land ocean, no firefighters. The results are gonna be the same? You gotta combine all those things together to make you come up with a budget. So, um, Carly, put me down to the bottom. Uh, wait a minute, let me start at the top. See that one up there that says minus four ninety-three? That is the non-departmental budget, they're pretty good. Alright? So where do you think that minus four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars went?
Back to the general fund.
Uh-uh, into the departmental budget. It was non-departmental. Now, so they look good, non-departmental looks pretty good. But now everybody else looks terrible because they're, they went up four hundred thirty-nine.
But we don't want a bunch of non-departmental.
We don't want a bunch of non-departmentals. We want program costs, we want to be able to assess what are we trying to achieve? And what are we paid to do that? Um, that's the whole, that's just the whole budget part, the spending part, what are we gonna do? The bottom line is this, um, go all the way to the bottom. This number as of today, um, of that chart is incorrect. You see that number that says five hundred eighty-six thousand, purple? It's off, alright? Because Jimmy and I met today, we went over revenues, expenses, um, but it's not off by much. Now, um, hold on for a second. Sanitation fund, balance. Water sewer fund, balance. You already dealt with water sewer fund back in December, remember? Increase. Problem with the water sewer fund to balance it means we got a cost overrun. We are flowing water profusely, we're bleeding profusely, and the only way I'm gonna do that is direct pressure. So we're sticking all our fingers in all these little holes, but something's still ain't right. We're searching, they were hunting. Um, I actually had talked to them last week about walking every line location in the woods. Go find out if you see something, I don't know. But walk the lines, walk the woods, don't stay, you know, wait, I don't know, do something, but walk the woods. We gotta figure out what's going on. But it's balanced. But it's balanced to the tune of paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month to purchase water. It will kill us. Um, we will just slowly die. The water sewer fund will slowly die. So we gotta figure out, get capture on this, where it's going, what are we doing? Um, so there's some significant issues that we continue to, uh, try to address and try to hunt for. Stormwater book fund is balanced. But we did that by adding a one dollar per month increase to the ERU. Equivalent designation, ERU. And it's around twenty-six hundred square foot. Uh, so basically, that's a twelve dollar increase in stormwater. Just tonight, we're talking about development, where does all this water go? There was a stormwater, the more development you have, the more impervious surface you have, the more prone this water's got to run. So we can't have a stormwater infrastructure system, that is, they'll, they'll activate and fall apart. How many of us know this missing stormwater? Friends? Over the last year? What's going on? What's going, what, all over, what's happened? So, uh, we, we're, we're proposing that increase, that's high level to the ERU. Um, the board ultimately will have to adopt that. And at the end of the day, um, this will either be, um, funded or not funded, but we will be in balance in the stormwater fund. And we can balance it through the output increase. I'm just gonna be pointing like we can.
But we need to fix.
But we need to fix stuff. And so, you know, what are you trying to accomplish? Do you want something that works, a viable system? Um, or do you want something that doesn't work, that just kind of lumps along and you just slowly move towards failure? Slowly move towards failure? That's my take on it. And finally, the general fund. I had to write this one down, I just don't know exactly what, backup pages, there's a backup map. This is the summary of our, uh, general fund as of today. Okay? Now, since we had a revaluation, we have to produce what's called a revenue neutral tax rate. Um, using seventy cents, our current tax rate is seventy-four, alright? Using seventy cents as our tax rate. We come up with a general, now, this is also fines and fees and sales tax and everything else. We come up with a general, general revenue estimate, general fund revenue estimate of ten million eighty-six thousand dollars. That includes one point five million dollars in loan proceeds to purchase police cars and fire trucks and dump trucks or whatever it may be, that CIP purchasing. And it also includes a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar inter-fund transfer. Now, it's, it's an inter-fund transfer that can create some problems for us that we have to be very, very cognizant of. Basically, the utility fund, water, sewer, stormwater, has to share in the cost of providing human resources, finance, um, administration, whatever it may be, public buildings, electric rates, you know, everything that comes with it. So there's an overhead cost that they have to transfer from the utility fund into the general fund so that the general fund's not subsidizing the enterprise. That's three hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's actually a little underfunded than what it could be, what it should be. But I would rather house most of the money in the utility fund to fix stuff than transfer it to the general fund. Um, you, you, it's just a, it's just a philosophy. I would rather keep as much of it in there rather than transferring it over to the general fund. Keep it in there to fix stormwater, fix pipes, do whatever you gotta do, instead of paying for overhead, um, in the, the general fund. So we're revenue estimate at ten million eighty-six thousand. Our general fund expense as of today is ten million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six. Mathematically, that means we're in the red, about four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, if you ever taken a few easy bucks in, right? So we still have some work in front of us. So when you see this five hundred eighty-six thousand dollar increase, instead of cut, you should ask, well, what is that? I will tell you what it is. It is health insurance increases. It is coal, it is capital. You know, one of it's capital right there, three hundred some thousand dollars for which far, uh, for things that haven't been replaced, that need to be replaced, need to be fixed. Uh, once again, give me a bunch of firefighters and no water, the results are the same. Give me a bunch of water and no firefighters, the results are the same. Give me firefighters, water and no fire truck, the results are the same. Followed, all of these things have to come together to keep it simple and that's what we're trying to do. So what that means is, is that going from seventy-four to seventy is a four hundred, is a, what, four cent drop? But each penny now, each one cent is worth seventy-two thousand dollars. So seventy-two and four is, you do math and you come up with, everything that you do. Alright? Everything that we do to balance this budget is about pennies. Maybe I'm mistaken about, it's about pennies. Um, and so one penny for us on the tax rate is seventy-two thousand dollars. So if I drop from seventy to sixty-nine, that's seventy-two thousand dollars of our revenue. If I go from seventy to seventy-one, it's adding seventy-two thousand dollars. I'm oversimplifying this, but I'm not really doing it for you, I know you get it, I want to make sure everybody else is, you know. That's really what we're talking about, one penny, um, seventy-two thousand dollars. Even if you went, stayed at the rate of seventy-four, we would still be in the hole.
About two hundred thousand.
About two hundred thousand dollars. So I still have to look at other expense cuts. Put yourself in my position, we're trying to field a team, a winning team. We can't do that if we can't, uh, compete in the market for police officers, firefighters. Grants ain't gonna solve the problem, that's what this is here. You know, we gotta deal with those things. So we end up with, uh, four frozen positions on police department, conversations about what those positions that are here can do. We increased the overtime budget in the fire department because we froze six vacant firefighter positions. Now, I want you to think about this. So if we increase the overtime so that our current firefighters can work more, and they work a forty-eight ninety-six schedule, that means at any given time, one of them can be exposed to working seventy-two hours straight, not with business. Okay? Um, if you, most people now, in the terms of generational workforce, um, prefer their time off than the extra money. They call that work-life balance. I wouldn't know what that is, but they call it work-life balance. You know, those are the things that we're struggling with. So keep this in mind, if the rate was a hundred thousand dollars for the price of a home last year and it was seventy-four cents tax rate, that was seven hundred and forty bucks. If we cannot afford to go to revenue neutral, period. That conversation is just insane to be having that conversation. I have to produce that number, but you can't do it when you're staring down one point four million dollar loss in sales tax. You gotta make up the difference. So from day one, everybody's talking about, oh, yeah, the, the change in the valuation will make up the difference. Nope, it won't, and it don't. That's just the bottom line. And so our, our sales tax is basically cut to half of what it's normally. And so now we have to make up the difference in how we do this. And so, uh, now you gotta look to, well, what is the long-term benefit? That's this year. One of the most important things you do as a board is the budget annual. But one of the most important thing that you do annually is set the stage for what the budget's gonna be next year, the year after that, the year after that, and the year after that. And so I'm proposing to you a budget process that looks at this on a five-year time. That's the whole engine for the strategic plan, within what our focus areas are, um, and then look in our CIP. You don't have this, by the way. So right now, I've got our first year capital improvement plan. The need or the demand is one point nine million dollars. In the budget, I got one point five. I got a four hundred thousand dollar deficit to replace this stuff, even in the CIP. I don't know that there's ever been a concerted effort to develop a long-range CIP. And here we are, alright? And so we have to deal with those things because how do I replace the backhoe five years from now? They don't plan for it. How do I put in the budget, uh, things we call, uh, OPEP, uh, separation allowances, things of this nature? OPEP being retirement insurance. We have a, um, I don't want to get this wrong, but I don't want to get too much in the weeds on it. We have a actuarial evaluation that says that we need to be funding up to four point five million dollars in retirement, retirement insurance into the future, based on last year's policy, personnel policy. We've changed the personnel policy, so that number should go down in terms of who's eligible for this insurance at the time. But it's not gonna disappear. And so we should be taking down and putting money away, some of it get heard, and so we, we're attempting to do this, by the way, in this budget. Um, putting money away in sanitation is an example. The balance, the budget is balanced, but we also have in our charted accounts a capital reserve in sanitation. So you're putting a little bit of those dollars in the capital reserve, because ultimately, you're gonna have to replace some of that capital to do sanitation, haul trucks, okay, whatever it may be. And so going, well, you know, we'll reduce the sanitation fund and do this and do this, you know, it becomes, well, what are you really gaining by doing that? And so that's all I wanted to accomplish with this, was to give you just kind of a general overview, that's where we're at. And so, that's all I wanted to accomplish with this, was to give you just kind of a general overview, that's where we're at. Um, we still, final draft budget would look like, but what I would like to do is ask you to help us by having a audit meeting so that we can go line on a by line through these budgets special. Um, I'll get some cheese and wine. Done. I'll get some cheese and wine. I'll get some cheese to go with the wine, how's that? That's a joke. Um, but anyway, I, I just want you to grasp that, that we've got some significant challenges, y'all are very aware of that. They're not going away, um, they're not gonna go away, you just have to navigate through them. And the decisions that are made this year will set the stage for coming years. So if I borrow two million dollars this year, that's just for this year. What I do next year? No two million, yeah. So this is an interesting little caveat. No matter what you do, one cent on our tax rate is seven hundred and, or seventy-two thousand dollars, right? To fund a code enforcement officer in this budget, seventy-three thousand dollars, right? That's no equipment, it's no truck, that's nothing, that's just salary benefits. So if I want to fund code enforcement officer two next year, right? I have to have growth in tax digest, changes in the fees, including the impact expense cut somewhere else. So just to have another seventy-three thousand dollars for another code enforcement officer next year, um, for to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three percent cola for our staff next year, I got to have a dramatic growth in the tax digest. What is it? To have another hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue? Look at it, he's, he's calculating, he's calculating.
I don't know.
Seven million dollars. How many homes have I had?
Seven million.
A bunch, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand each. A whole lot of them.
It's just math. So when I ask you, you know, you're gonna do twenty and some, what's the market rate? That's a critical question. Isn't how fast we can do it, you ain't got it done yet. Now, but you don't want that growth to occur outside your borders, you want it inside your borders. You wanna take advantage of the infrastructure you have, not expand it. So, um, with that, I just wanted to give you that general overview, I know that that's, um, I realize that everybody got the, the sheets, it's like, oh my god. It was not my intent to go through every one of these, but to have, so you have the information and we can come back together and talk about that, uh, at another day, but that's your, okay? I'm done.
So what I do wanna do is make sure that myself, Mayor Proten and Commissioner Placios, we will have something, you guys can do something next week. Let's get that information, Carly can kind of wrangle us together as soon as possible. Um, again, if, if schedule's committed next week, first Monday will die. Next week, first Monday. You can just send those over to Carly, let's, let's try and put something together immediately.
Monday.
And you know, we're in an open meeting.
Mondays were closed. Oh, not this Monday, I said, what, next Monday?
No, it's not four.
Just thirties. The same audit committee we've been using.
Okay, alright, I'll explain later.
You know, we're pretty, it's on the same, you say you wanna try to have an open meeting next week, but then we can't.
I'll fill you in.
Thank you. For sure.
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Rory, I don't know if this is one of those veteran park overlook, oversight sort of thing. Uh, as we're discussing property values, property taxes, and the elephant in the room that we're gonna have to address is these, these delinquent taxes that we're gonna need to get, get our town attorney kind of involved so that whether they pay up, whether we put liens on there, I know you said sometimes the juice ain't worth the squeeze, but i- if we don't squeeze it, we're never gonna get any juice out of it. So, a- as we look at this tax digest and these, these properties that people are just saying, whatever, uh, it's time to say whatever is here now. So, I think we need to just start looking at that.
Mayor Proten?
I just wanna ask, um, where are we at on tax collection?
Ninety-eight point eight-three percent.
Ninety-eight point eight, that's a good one.
Yeah, we're going.
The county has done a very good job of tax collection this year.
Oh, right.
We will, we could only budget what we collected, uh, from the conservative standpoint, we're probably budgeting ninety-eight percent to give us whatever that little decimal point.
That's good.
Really good. We, we should be right at ninety-nine by the end of the year.
Oh, wow.
Alright, any other questions for Mr. Rory?
Thank you for that. We will make sure that we, uh, get the audit committee to convene ASAP, um, so that we can go over this and, uh, get the draft budget to the LGC in a, in an appropriate time.
Thank you. They gave me the extension, they just kicked it, so I said, well, what authority do you have to give extension to the general statute?
You gotta look. Okay, awesome. I lost my, and then, there it is. Thank you. Mayor's report, but I didn't realize what you said until I saw it. Okay, very quickly, Happy Mothers' Day, um, to all of the mothers, um, and Happy Belated Birthday to Commissioner, or Mayor Proten Cooper, whose birthday was on the 4th. Um, absolutely. So I have been MIA for about two weeks. I spent a week, almost a week, in City Vision, um, where I was, a- along with, um, Mayor Proten, Commissioner Chadwick, and Mr. Rory. Uh, they were awarded the Certificate of Municipal Achievement, and I was awarded the Certificate of Municipal Excellence um, for the training hours that we put in, uh, with the league. Um, it's a pretty big deal, so I'm proud of, of us continuing to make sure that we are, uh, stay on top of what's happening um, in our professional development. So kudos to, um, those three, uh, for making that happen. Um, we did have a, or, excuse me, um, Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman De- Devier did do a state of the county. I highly encourage you to all go to Cumberland County's website. It was a, uh, maybe a thirty to forty-five minute, um, video, or, uh, it was a lot, it was live at the, at the time of the chairman laying out the plans for the county. Uh, there was talks of regionalization, there were talks about, uh, our nine-one-one mergers. So, uh, if you want to say a bridge, I absolutely, if property taxes were discussed, uh, please go to the Cumberland County website or their social media pages, and you can do a recap of, um, the chairman's video. Um, the mayor's coalition meeting was here this past Friday. I was stuck in the airport, um, for eighteen hours, and that's not a little PTSD from that. But, uh, Mayor Proten stepped up and handled that meeting. Thank you to the staff, uh, for putting that together, and I'm sure she has updates from that that she'll get and put out. Um, on her update. Um, our video shoot, we are, if you guys remember a few months back, you saw a video with my face saying that we're gonna be doing a video to broadcast and showcase our community. We start our shoots tomorrow, uh, myself, Mayor Proten, Commissioner Placios, our fire chief, our police chief. I'm gonna get his face in there some kind of way. Um, Wednesday, we will be doing our, uh, initial video shoots, so stay tuned for that. I'm super excited about us having something to showcase what's happening in our community, the growth, uh, and just the fact that we are a really, really great place to live. Um, we have our meetup with the other two big municipalities, I call us the big three. It's Fayetteville, Hope Mill, and Spring Lake. Um, we will be sitting together to discuss community, um, measures and how we can work together um, as the three biggest municipalities in Cumberland County. So that's coming up, uh, on this, didn't put the date down, but I'll make sure, I'll tell you what came from that at our next meeting. Um, Mayor, no, Manchester, they had an EOG parade today, and Lieutenant Sutton was there, and when I tell you, if you guys are low on energy, go sit with a bunch of excited elementary kids. They changed my entire day, but it was so good to see how, see them celebrated and pumped up. It was like a little pep rally to get them prepared for EOGs. Um, so we had a chance, you know, pour into them and talk to them and love on them a bit, but it was a lot of fun. And it was really good to see Lieutenant Sutton there. I was really surprised to turn around and see his smiling face. He was having just as much fun as the kids were. I was too. And so, Lunch with the Mayor is on the twenty-eighth of this month, twelve P.M. at IHOP. So please, if you'd like to join me, come out and have some pancakes, uh, or steak mix, which is my favorite, at IHOP on the twenty-eighth. And again, just to reiterate, we are closed, um, on the twenty-sixth for Memorial Day. So there won't be a meeting on that Monday, and that is all that I have. Mayor Proten?
Thank you. Um, again, uh, I did attend the North Carolina League of Municipalities, um, annual conference in Greenville. And, uh, one thing that I wanted to mention was, the mayor and I attended a, a class called Commit to Civility. And also, um, most of the sessions that they had gave you credit to the, uh, AML program, which is where we got our certificates from. And so, Commit to Civility was a two-hour class, and, um, there are several communities had, who are, uh, um, their whole board has committed to civility, and we're hoping that our board will also, uh, attend the, um, session online and also, uh, have us, um, op- be a civil, civil community, I can't remember what it's called, but anyway, it was a great class, especially at these times. Um, and the mayor's coalition, there were a few things, there's a, um, I don't have the, the, um, the, the little paper, but there's an app you can get that'll show you everything that's going on on For Bread. Um, and, um, I've talked about it, and I have it on my phone. It's, uh, I can't read this. It's called For Bread. You know? It's called My Army Post, that's what it's called, My Army Post. And it has a lot of information, and one of the things it mentioned was, the group Palmer Lee will be playing, uh, at their Fourth of July event on, um, June twenty-eighth, and also Ludacris. So, um, he did mention those two groups. Palmer Lee is actually, uh, a group from Palmer Lee, North Carolina. She and I both know the mayor from there. Um, so they mentioned that. They also mentioned, um, at the coalition, I asked Cumberland FCEDC, which is the Economic Development, um, they, they do, they usually work with big companies, and I said, well, how can you help us? Cause we're a small company, we don't have huge sites. We just wanna help with, uh, growing in a smaller way. And, uh, Shirley Devier said that the county did have funding to help with things like that, and that's what was mentioned at that event, so I'm gonna find out how we can tap into that. Uh, another thing, thing that was mentioned was that there is monies to help people fix up, especially seniors, fix up their homes. Um, it's been mentioned more than once, but there is, so that's something else that I wanted to mention. And the last thing was the funding, the DCIP funding, uh, for communities that are close to military bases. Uh, he mentioned that Jacksonville had gotten a million dollars for U-Backtunes. So, that, and then I saw where another place got sixteen million for one in Seattle, so that's something we definitely need to look at. But, um, oh, and I do have, uh, the meeting the mayor was talking about, where Hope Mills and Fayetteville is, um, May thirteenth, or tomorrow. Mm-hmm. And I, I'm also, I know there's a lot going on with the streets and roads, so I've already, I've signed up for a webinar uh, called Clean Connected Communities: Understanding the Skip Process, because understanding DOT is, there's all these acronyms that are, so I figure I need to understand, since they're talking about bringing another road close to us, adjacent to us, or whatever, so I am attending that tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Placios?
I had the pleasure of, um, participating in the torch run, and it was a pretty good turnout, and that, if I'm not mistaken, they still have T-shirts that you can, um, for donations, that you can contact us or, and that's all I have.
Oh, what about the coffee that the commissioners owe the twenty-nine? I thought I put that, that was absolutely on my list, and I went a different way. But, no, you're right.
Um, myself, Mayor Proten, and Commissioner Lockman will be meeting with, um, the Cumberland County Commissioners to discuss multiple issues and potential partnering connections with the county, and we will bring back, um, updates from that meeting.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lockman?
Thank you, Mayor, I got a few things.
I'm sure.
Hushed today. Uh, like the mayor, I'd like to wish all the, the mothers out there Happy Belated Mothers' Day. Uh, I, I hope you were, were treated just like you deserve. That's important. Without you, there would be no us. So, uh, Military Tribute Banner, Mayor, for the second year, we've got that returning. We've got twenty-seven returning banners, and we've got seven new banners that will be going up on Main Street uh, for Armed Forces Day, so that's coming up this week. Memorial, Memorial Day, the Spring Lake Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee uh, will be hosting our annual Memorial Day event Friday, May twenty-third at eleven A.M. at Veterans Park. We will be able to showcase our new and revised Veterans Park. The mayor will be given the open comments at Veterans Park, and she'll be able to see her banner displayed right there on the corner and afterwards. Feel free to walk, don't park. Feel free to walk on the grass, on the sod out there, and enjoy Veterans Park for all the hard work that the town employees have went and built a park. Thank you. Moving on to cleanup. Mayor, did you know on May third that we went out and, and attacked part of that illegal dump site out there?
I did.
Did, you know how much poundage we collected?
Tell me.
We collected fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty pounds of debris
Wow.
out there. Two rollback dumpsters full. We had the Streets Department out there packing it down so they can get more stuff in. That doesn't include all the tires that got rolled out of it. But you know what? We're going back out there again on June seventh, and we're gonna attack it again and work on some more of that. As Mr. Rory says, man, money, machines, and material, it takes all of those in order to be able to, to work on that. The volunteers that we've had out there, it starts with one volunteer. It's those steady eddies, it's those charles, it's those patchers that come out there. It's those Adrians that come out there every single time, rain or cold, out there working. It takes one group, Delta Company, second of the eighty-second, attack helicopter battalion, coming out there nine deep, coming out there cleaning up stuff out there. They, I don't know if they've adopted us, or we've adopted them, but many of them live here in Spring Lake, and these soldiers wanna do something to give back. They take part of their Saturday off to come out there and help clean up our town. So it really is our town that we have out there. So we will continue to attack this on June seventh, eight A.M. to eleven. We're gonna be back out there working it. Uh, we've got so many volunteers, we had twenty-five this last, last time. Streets Department, they were fantastic, came out there and provided that man, money, machine, material so we can get that done. So what goes into a cleaner Spring Lake? You and I. Keeping our properties clean, it takes Chief Charmin with Code Enforcement out there. It takes the app for people to report those information that we go out there. It takes the adopter streets, it takes those groups, those individuals out there to clean up one section of Spring Lake to make it better. And all of those things together, as Mr. Rory said, goes into making Spring Lake a much cleaner, livable, active place. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Placios?
Thank you. So, on May first, we had a National Day of Prayer at Veterans Park, so, uh, sorry that it spilled thunder there, sir. But, uh, it was a good event, and nobody drove on the grass. Uh, and then, um, we have our affairs committee on Wednesday, and that's gonna be at four o'clock across the street at the Rep Center. So, uh, if anybody wants to help out with that, or share their expertise or knowledge or concerns, you can attend that meeting. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Chadwick, did you have-
Commissioner Chadwick, did you have anything? Commissioner Chadwick, did you have an update on, or, or on your report?
Um, I just wanted to let anyone know that tomorrow starts, you know, detox of N S I S, I'm testing, um, just to make sure that your chief is gonna get plenty of rest, a good nutritious breakfast in the morning, and I'm just having them to review, because this is how, um, the schools determine how will the students understand the standards, and just play hard base, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Rory?
I've said enough, but there is one thing I wanna follow up on, sorry. Um, back to the strategic plan. Is it possible that a member of staff could, uh, attend the appearance?
We do have a member of staff already, Deanna Rosario attends, but I wanna talk a little bit about the strategic plan.
Oh, yeah, he's a...
Yeah, so I will personally be absent. The committee members already, feel free to attend. You're the boss.
I can't, because I will be at Chapel Hill at the University of my own. Um, and so, but I will try to get...
You wanna nominate somebody, that's fine.
To brief.
Don't, don't be bummed.
I just wanna tie the strategic plan to it. And so then the last one is it, um, I also had a tense day, um, but I've been able to, I enjoyed Saturday, um, attending a class with, uh, members of our Public Works Department on small engine repair. Now, at the end of the day, that doesn't really mean a whole lot, um, but it's really huge, because what we're trying to do is encourage all of our staff to take advantage of our premier community colleges in the state. And so if you ask yourself a question, um, what community college can you go to within an hour in this location? You'll get, I think, Lady Lake Tech, Central Carolina, Sanford, uh, Robson, Public, obviously, that DCC, and Sandfields. So we need to do whatever we can to make sure our people, um, our staff, our team, um, is aware of the opportunities that they are there. Uh, we need to make sure that we participate with them as much as we can. Um, I was at this small engine repair, um, with Chuck, Deanna, um, and we pitched off. And so we're gonna end up buying some tool, much-needed tools, so that they can work on lawnmowers and blowers. And I figured, we got stuff like that, we have to fix.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we're trying to encourage them to take advantage of this corporate continuing education environment at community colleges. So much so, but it was a tense day, but I would like to close with a smile. Um, we have found a class that says, has learning new technology kept you using an old flip phone? Is your tablet, you have dust on the table, uh, introducing a fun course to help you master the functions. Is he smiling? (laughing) I'm sorry, y'all, it does come with a smiley face. Carly sent this out and says, we think this would help Sutton with our CUP. We found this program. So we're having a little fun, uh, at the expense of Deanna, and I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be mean to you, but he likes his flip phone.
He likes his flip phone.
And so we pick on him constantly about his flip phone. So I just wanted to close with that. Sorry.
(laughing) Mr. Porter?
Uh, yeah, I'll be fairly brief. We're still wrapping up the plush case, uh, that should be done by the next time we need, cause it seems like we won't be down in about three weeks, I'm sure we got it. Um, so, uh, Mr. Rory and I are still working on some of the projects that we've discussed in those sessions. That's going well and moving forward. Uh, also, I don't know if it was mentioned last time, but I think John's been here a year.
That's it. I knew it was vacation.
Oh, yeah, he's been here a year.
One year, my, May first, John has, it does not feel like a year at all.
He didn't leave for anything.
Oh, my God. It's been a...
No, I'm tired.
You deserve to cry if you were crying. No, seriously, Mr. Rory, what you've accomplished in a year, and not just walking into a budget that had like fifteen minutes before it needed to be turned in, empowering the, in the staff, teaching the board, I mean, and just being, you know, a grr kind of guy, and like, this man is so full of heart and compassion, and he cares, and he started working for a time before he was even hired, completely hired. He was already a hundred percent invested, so I will take this time out to say, thank you. Uh, you're a manager like we haven't seen in this time before. And you tell, you can tell the truth by the fruit it produces, and you are producing fruit in places that we didn't know fruit could grow. Thank you so, so much for caring. Thank you for putting up with what you're putting up with. Thank you for fighting it out and still coming back the next day, um, because we hand you a lot, and you are taking it like a real pro. You're empowering staff, leaders, real leaders, create leaders, and that's exactly what you've done. And we see it, and the staff see it, so thank you. Thank you for all you've done and what you continue to do. We're gonna keep you in a headlock. So, Mr. Rory deserves a huge round of applause, and to that place, I would like to close with you. Well, with that being said, that's our high note. We're leaving on the high note, thank, thank you to you. This meeting is now adjourned.